Hello, everyone. My name is Avni Deval and this is Raya Brahmba. And we are co-presidents of Ridge Exploration for Political Participation, a nonpartisan nonprofit club at Ridge High School, working to increase youth civic engagement. And we are working in conjunction with the League of Women's Voters to host this candidate's forum. The League of Women's Voters of New Jersey is a nonpartisan political nonprofit that works to empower voters and defend democracy. Founded 100 years ago, they make democracy work by protecting voting rights and encouraging robust participation. Elections and voting are core concerns for the League of Women's Voters, and leagues are committed to providing fact-based information about issues and the positions candidates take on those issues to help voters make their own decisions and participate in the electoral process. The League of Women's Voters never supports or opposes candidates for office or political parties. Any use of the league name or a footage from the forum in campaign materials, literature, or advertising of any kind, including but not limited to internet, cable, radio, or television, has not been authorized by the League of Women's Voters. The forum will be recorded and published on the League of Women's Voters website, as well as the Ridge Exploration for Political Participation Club website. As a courtesy to the candidates, please turn off all cell phones and other electronic devices now. And please refrain from taking photos and recording during the forum. All public health protocols will be followed during the event, as will Executive Order 251, which mandates the wearing of masks in the premise of all public, private, and parochial preschool elementary school and secondary school buildings, as well as social distancing to the best of our ability. Tonight, our forum will be moderated by Ann Armstrong, a member of the League of Women's Voters, who is not a resident of Bernards Township. The candidates for the Bernards Township Board of Education are seated on this stage in the order in which they will appear on the ballot. From left to right, we have incumbent Robin McKean, incumbent Timothy Salmon, Kirsten Light, and incumbent Herpreet Gudia Singh, vying for three seats on the nine-member Board of Education for three-year terms. In addition, incumbent Ruchika Hira is vying to fill the remaining unexpired two-year term. The format for the evening will consist of 90-second opening and closing statements and questions from the audience, both in person and virtually. Each candidate will have 60 seconds to respond to each question and 30 seconds for a rebuttal to be used by request. If you want to ask a question, please raise your hand, and a student volunteer will bring you a note card and pen. Please return the card and pen when you are done writing, and thank you all for attending.
Thank you, Avni. Good evening. We have with us this evening candidates vying for three seats on the Bernards Township Board of Education, plus candidates vying for a seat on the Board of Education for an unexpired term. Before introducing the candidates, I'd like to explain the format, although Avni did quite a good job of that. Each candidate will give a brief opening statement. After the opening statement, we will have questions from the audience. All candidates will have an opportunity to answer each question. Each question is timed by a person sitting up front. I would like you to, as a courtesy to the candidates, please refrain from applause until the end of the evening. Although Avni said the candidates that are here tonight, we have with us, we, I'm sorry, there are two additional candidates that could not be here tonight, and that's Carl Byrd and Lawrence Nastro. Carl Byrd is one of the five going for the seat on the Bernards Township Board of Education, and Lawrence Nastro is going for the unexpired term. For the rest of the forum, I will no longer distinguish between the candidates running for full term versus those running for the unexpired term. They're all candidates to the Bernards Township Board of Education and will be treated as such. The candidates that were not able to appear with us this evening have submitted statements, which I will read. And I will read those two statements, one from each candidate, now. We have Carl Byrd, and this is his opening. Unexpectedly, his wife was taken to the hospital late this afternoon. His words: "Think of how much the world has changed since you were in school. I tell my students that when I was their age, Google had just been created. We had no smartphones, no YouTube, no Wi-Fi. They think I'm as old as dirt. It's hard to think of how much change we have seen. Most of this has happened within the lives of our K through 12 students." Cultural anthropologist Margaret Mead perhaps said it best. "We are now at a point where we must educate our children in what no one knew yesterday and prepare our schools for what no one knows yet. In 2016, it was estimated that 65% of children entering grade school will end up working in jobs that don't exist yet. The trend is not going to stop. If anything, it has accelerated due to the global pandemic. It is due to this constant change that I believe I am the right person for our Board of Education. Decisions impacting the future cannot be based on a nostalgic view of education. It must be based on best practices, current trends, and visions for the future. I believe that at the local, state, and federal levels, educators are needed in the classrooms where decisions are made about education. I am a teacher. My classroom doesn't operate the same way as classrooms ran 20 years ago. It doesn't operate the same way I taught five years ago. I have my finger on the pulse of education. As a candidate who is an educator, I am ready to hit the ground running. I bring 16 years of knowledge in the field, including curriculum design, standards implementation, school finance regulation, community outreach, metrics of post-secondary readiness, and more. I look forward to bringing my experience to the board so that in collaboration with the superintendent and other board members, we can develop and enact policies that implement continual growth for our current and future students. Most importantly to me, as the father of a two-year-old, I want to make sure that Bernards Township will continue to be a leader in education for whatever the world looks like when they walk across the stage to accept their diplomas." Again, that was the opening statement for Carl Byrd, who could not be with us this evening. I now have the opening statement for Dr. Larry Nastro. He regrets he could not be here in person as he was recovering from a leg injury restricting stairs. Dear students, parents, and school staff of Bernards Township, I am a triple-board certified infectious disease, pulmonary, and internal medicine specialist for over 40 years. I also served as Director of Infectious Disease at Overlook Hospital from 1984 to 2015. I have also had the distinction of on and honor to serve my country in the United States Air Force. I would like now to serve Bernards children and ensure their safety against this pandemic. New Jersey has one of the highest rates of mortality in the nation since the pandemic began. More recently, we are doing better due to vaccinations and appropriate measures. However, we need to be vigilant and also take care of children as a whole. This includes children's mental health and well-being. Provisions under the CDC guidance and at the National Institute of Health, with whom I have collaborated over my career, allow for expedient exceptions for masks for these children and parental control. We want these children to return to school and be with their friends returning to life as normal as possible. This is what the CDC allows. Second, as a board-based curriculum, Martin Luther King stated, "Intelligence plus character; that's the goal of true education." As concerned parents, teachers, we have to foster character-building and life skills. This means supporting their ability to think independently, question, reason, and bring forward new ideas and not be prospective. Further, we need to nurture STEAM, which is science, technology, engineering, the arts, and math, so that children leave our schools with the tools to reach their full potential and move the world forward. Every single child is different, and every single child deserves the opportunity to try different subjects that will bring out the best in them. We owe this to each child, and they are our future. It is my honor to serve Bernards children, and I ask for you to vote for me." That again was Dr. Larry Nastro's opening statement. Now that we have the two people that aren't here taken care of, we will continue with the opening statement of the people that are here. We will begin with Herpreet Gudia Singh.
Good evening. My name is Gudia Singh. I'm running for the three-year term. As I was thinking about today's meeting and the forum, again amongst all of our candidates here today and the two that aren't, I was thinking about the last four months and how it's gone for me on the board. I'm the newest member to join the Board of Education at Bernards Township. I've had the great honor of being on the board since June of this past summer. Joining at that point, it's just been an eye-opening experience since. I've gotten the inside perspective on how decisions are made for the betterment of our students and the families. As a parent myself of three young children, one who has not even started in the school system yet, prior to joining the board, I had very little idea on how much work it is to put into all of these executive decisions that we make for our district. I can only speak to it after having seen it over these past four months. To be a Board of Education member, you have to have passion, an indubitable desire to make a positive change, leaving this place better than how you find it. This involves listening to the students and the staff of our community, the administration and the other board members, being inclusive to all of our students, using finances wisely, complying with the law, leaving any political agendas at home, and just being a humanitarian first. I strongly believe that I have all these qualities, and I am really excited to keep going and doing this for the next three years. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, Kirsten Light.
Good evening. I'd like to start the evening by saying thank you to all that had made this happen. Everyone joining this evening, the League of Women Voters and to the REPP group at Ridge for working so diligently on this and taking an interest in America's most sacred right, the right to vote. I would like to thank you all for the opportunity to share why I'm running for the Board of Education. But most of all, I would like to thank the current Board of Education, who are here onstage, for their service. As I understand, we are all operating in unprecedented times, and service to our children is so important as we navigate through them. My name is Kirsten Light. I have been a resident of Bernards Township since 2010. I live in town with my husband Frank, who's here this evening. And some of you may know because he has employed several children of this town at his business at Rutgers University, as well as my two children, Kaylee, who's also here tonight, who is a senior at Ridge, and Jackson, my son, who is also here tonight, who is in kindergarten at Liberty Corner School. Throughout my residency in the township, I have served in many different roles: as a class mom at Cedar Hill School, as a licensed soccer coach for Somerset Hills Soccer Club and Ridge Mavericks, as a team parent for FC Burna, on the board of FC Burna, and most recently as what I call, quote, "the head coach" for my son's flag football team with Ridge Youth Sports, and also a new volunteer for the Liberty Corner PTO STEAM Committee. All of these roles have brought me so much joy and satisfaction through interacting with our community's youth. Now, I would like to serve in another capacity as a member of the Board of Education.
Thank you. Timothy Salmon.
Hello, everyone. I'm Timothy Salmon. I'm a current member of the Board of Education, and I'm running for the three-year term. I've lived in Baskinridge for nine years with my wife. My twins were in sixth grade at WHAMs and a daughter who's in second grade at Oak Street. It's been extremely rewarding, interesting, and sometimes even fun to be on the Board of Education here in Baskinridge. It's working with an amazing staff and administration on a daily basis through committee meetings with engaging discussion has been really part of the rewarding experience. And I've had some great experiences. One that immediately comes to mind is part of the policy committee. We got to meet with students from each of the schools, student councils, and hear about what changes we can make. So selfishly, I'd like to have more of those experiences. I'm running for reelection because I want to continue to serve the community, assist the staff and administration to create an environment in which all of our kids can succeed and enjoy themselves and build self-confidence. Thank you.
Thank you. Ruchika Hira.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Ruchika S. Hira. Academically, I graduated from New York University. I have a Juris Doctorate from Rutgers School of Law, and after law school, I completed a one-year judicial clerkship. I have several certifications in mediation and conflict resolution, including a certification in mediating disputes from the Harvard Negotiation Institute. I am a practicing family law attorney. Additionally, I volunteer my time at a local nonprofit organization whose mission is to end all forms of gender-based violence. I've been married for 16 years. My husband is a physician and holds a faculty position in the radiology department at Rutgers Medical School. I have two children currently in the school district: a first grader at Oak Street and a seventh grader at William &amp; Anne Middle School. I have been on the board since February, and it has, quite frankly, been a humbling experience. I continue to invest my time and energy to educate myself on how to be a better Board of Ed member because I want to continue to serve and advocate for all of our students as they deserve. There can be no dispute that this year has been a challenging year for our students, parents, teachers, faculty, staff, and the list goes on. However, I have always believed that a school board comprised of members with diverse backgrounds, education, and experiences adds to the effectiveness of a school board and community as the board benefits from multiple perspectives. And I genuinely believe we have a great administration and board. When I'm sitting at the school board table late at night on a Monday, I want the community to know my focus is solely on the students in our district, their families, and how the decisions that we make impact them because that is what matters to me.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Time's up. Right. Last but not least, Robin McKean. Turn your...
Hi. I'm Robin McKean, and as a lot of you out there that I see that I recognize know, I've been on the board for a very long time. When I first ran for the board, my oldest daughter had just finished fifth grade, and I didn't need these stupid reading glasses. Now she's in her fourth year of teaching fifth grade, and she absolutely loves it. She was inspired to become a teacher by the amazing teachers that she had in Bernards Township. And I want all of my, all the kids I know, all the kids coming up in this district to have the same wonderful experience that my older children had when they went through the district and my younger two children are still having in the district. I feel strongly that I can continue to help the board navigate these challenging times in public education and make our schools even stronger. Making informed decisions requires a board member to commit many hours of time, as other people have mentioned, and hard work. Of course, we listen to the experts that work in our district, but we also do our own homework. We research things, we look at data, and we use our professional networks and organizations to help us gather information. I feel like that my many years of experience in education and my networks that I have made in the state and at Rutgers Graduate School of Education, where I work and where I go to school, gives me a unique perspective and helps me contribute to the district. The Board of Ed is a nonpartisan elected position. Board members take an oath to uphold the New Jersey Board Member Code of Ethics, which requires that we act in the best interests of all students and not be beholden to any special interest groups. So the board, it's very important that the board takes this seriously, this oath. And the board needs to work together collaboratively and do their best to support our school district. I will continue to do that if I'm reelected.
Thank you. It is now time for the submitted questions. I'd like to remind you that questions must be related to issues and not personalities. All candidates will have the opportunity to answer each question. A rebuttal from the other candidates will be permitted but not required. The first question, and the first person to answer the first question is Kirsten Light. The question is, "Which BOE committees would you like to serve on and why?" 60 seconds.
This is actually a good question for me. I am a certified public accountant by trade. I worked for Ernst &amp; Young as a senior manager there, and I've been in the accounting profession for 26 years at this point. So with my background, with my ability to analyze data, to negotiate contracts, I feel that I would be very well-served on the Finance Committee to help make sure that our taxpayer dollars, which are high for our school district, are being used in the best interest of the children and that we're also getting our money's worth and making sure that they're being spent responsibly, but also, you know, trying to stretch those dollars where we can invest more in the children, students, the support for the students, and less on things that don't quite, you know, hit the mark. So I think that that's probably, you know, the area where I feel I can do a lot of good within the school board.
Thank you. Timothy Salmon. Which BOE committees would you like to serve on and why?
Thank you. So I am currently the Chair of the Finance Committee, which I've been for the past two years, which is a very interesting, illuminating discussion because we run around over $100 million budget. So finding out how and when those dollars are spent is extremely important, and I've learned a lot over the past two years. I do enjoy being on that committee. I'm also on the Personnel Committee and the Curriculum Committee. Curriculum is a great experience because you get to meet on a monthly basis with the supervisors of each subject area, principals of the school, other board members, and then sometimes teachers. And it's just such an engaging discussion all the time. I ask a lot of questions, so I think sometimes I'm the reason we might run over. And even, policy committees sometimes get short shrift, but that is also an engaging discussion because you're getting policies that are applicable to the entire state. So it's very interesting to find out how we could apply those to Bernards Township. Thank you.
Thank you. Robin McKean.
Well, at this point, since I've been on the board so long, I've served on all the committees, and I enjoyed all of them. I feel that, like Tim said, being on the Curriculum Committee and now the New Wellness Committee, which I just got to join, so I'm really enjoying that one, is very fun because you get to engage with so many different people that work in the district and hear about so many things that are going on with the students and the staff in our district. So I love being on those committees. Obviously, all the committees are important. Negotiations is something that the Finance Committee usually does, and I've served on that a lot of times. And that's a very important committee. And so if I stay on the board, I'd be willing to serve and chair whichever committees need to be done at this point.
Thank you. Ruchika, before you start, we need you to turn off your microphone when you're not speaking. Okay. Gudia, you have the answer to this question about which BOE committees would you like to serve on.
Thank you. So I find myself having an affinity towards the Wellness Committee based on my professional, based on my profession right now. I'm actually a holistic wellness chef. So I do work with food; that's my niche. But as a holistic wellness coach, you learn that primary foods and secondary foods are what feeds your soul and your actual body. So something like healthy relationships, physical fitness, fulfilling career or school, emotional wellness, these are all things that I'm very concerned about. And then especially with this past year in COVID, I feel that it's more important than ever now to see how mindful we are with our families, with our students, with our staff. Everybody wants to be successful, but you have to make sure that things are lined up to harbor that. Thank you.
Thank you. Ruchika.
So I was placed on the Policy Committee. And to many, for those that are new, that's how we're placed. But as an attorney, I couldn't have been placed on a better committee because unlike others, I could analyze statutes, executive orders, and review them all day long. It's what I do. I was also put recently on the Finance Committee, and I do have a Bachelor's of Arts in Economics and in Family Law. Surprisingly, as much as we do writing, we do a lot of analyzations of assets, liabilities, we're doing budgets, things of that nature. So I personally enjoy being on both committees. I don't mind staying on those committees. But I did get to sub in and be on one of the Curriculum Committees, and I have to say, I enjoyed that too. So I'm open to being on any of those committees. And hopefully, I have the opportunity to go through the other committees in the future if elected because I think it allows you to have a global understanding of all the issues.
Thank you. All right. The next question. Should the statewide mask mandate be lifted? What mask policy do you believe should be imposed in our public schools? Ruchika, you're first on this one. Mask mandate.
Great. The reality of it is, I don't like wearing a mask. I'm struggling as I speak right now. I know my children do not like wearing a mask. But currently, there is an executive order executed by Governor Murphy, which makes it the law in the state of New Jersey that all public schools must maintain a policy requiring everyone in schools to wear a mask in the indoor portion of the school unless an exemption to this order applies. Additionally, current New Jersey Department of Health and New Jersey Department of Education guidance permits school districts to not quarantine children who are three feet apart if they have masks on. This is what allows our kids to stay in school. I genuinely sympathize with students whose education is impacted by the fact that they have to wear a mask during school and are being taught by a teacher who has to wear a mask. However, in those situations, the law does permit for exemptions. My husband is a physician; I'm not. But even if one or more members of the board had a medical or scientific background, the board should not substitute its opinions for the laws of the state. More so, our district employs medical experts and professionals to guide us. Ask...
Thank you very much. Yes, sorry. Robin, you're next. It's about the mask mandate.
Okay. Well, as Ruchika just said, it is a mandate in our state. I think we're seeing cases of districts that have, you know, a lot more kids out on quarantine and out of school than us right now. We, knock on wood, we've been doing pretty well. And I just took my child for a COVID test today, so I sympathize with everyone who's struggling with this whole thing. He doesn't have COVID. His brother had a cold.[1564.86]
His brother had a cold. His brother got his test, and it was negative. But it's just, this has been a really hard two years for everybody, and nobody likes this. No one likes anything about this. I feel that, you know, under the current health conditions and the mandates that we have, we just have to keep plowing forwards. As Ruchika pointed out, there are exemptions for situations for the mask mandate. But at this point in time, you know, like she pointed out, it's not our place to question the mandate or be the scientific experts on this. We listen to all of our Health Department experts and other people, and we're just doing the best we can right now.
Thank you. Kirsten Light. Mask mandate.
Can you repeat the question in its entirety, please?
Of course. Should the statewide mask mandate be lifted? What mask policy do you believe should be imposed in our public schools?
So I want to answer the question as asked. I understand completely that is the law, and we must follow the law related to masks. However, you know, the detriments to especially some of our younger children and the education of our younger children, particularly with IEPs, developmental delays, 504s, is quite excessive. So from a masking policy, yes, I do think that the mask mandate should be lifted in its entirety. But particularly as it comes to what the law says, we should be making it easier for those populations of children within our district, of which there are many, to get those exceptions and make sure those exceptions are expedited. So that's how I feel about that. But, you know, agree with what the statements were made by the existing board members, that I feel that we do need to follow the law. But we need to follow the law in its entirety and with the exceptions that are also provided under that law.
Thank you. Harpreet Gudia Singh?
Thank you. So since the pandemic has hit, the common goal was to get kids back into school. As a community, I think most of us, if not all of us, pretty much struggled last year with virtual learning. And if the option is either to stay at home without a mask on and be in front of a screen all day, or to come into school and learn amongst your friends and your teachers with a mask on for eight hours, then my preference is the latter. I don't think that this is a sustainable issue. We're not going to see this for hopefully past, you know, a year or two. Hopefully, not even that long. Let's hope that it's shorter than that. But at the most, I feel it's not going to go that far. And I feel that as a community, we rely on each other to encourage our children to do the right thing. And if it's a law, how are we supposed to ask our kids to not follow a rule if we're trying to teach them to do the right thing at home? With the exceptions that my fellow board members and Kirsten just mentioned, of course, those would be the only reason I would be supportive of not wearing a mask at school at this point.
Thank you. Timothy Salmon?
I hope that the statewide mandate gets lifted. I, you know, like everybody else in the audience probably and at home, I, you know, look at the daily numbers and the Cali Matrix and anything else I can find to see if I can read some tea leaves and hope that we're, you know, the data is looking more like it did over the summer when the governor did have a mask optional policy over the extended school year, and the district did implement that when that was the directive from the governor. Now that there's a different directive, like everyone said, it's the law, we have to follow it. But I do hope the mask mandate gets lifted. The mask policy should not, in my opinion, be set by the Board. It is a public health issue, and it's, as Gudia mentioned, nobody's expertise or judgment on the Board should be substituted from that of the Department of Health of the state. I think that's a bad road to go down when the Board is kind of picking and choosing what, you know, laws it's going to follow. Advocacy is another thing, but I think that the mask policy should be dictated by the Department of Health.
Thank you. All right, the next question. Do you support the district's plans to survey students, staff, and parents about diversity, equity, and inclusion? How do you think the district should support LGBTQ students and staff members? Gudia Singh, you're first. Take your time.
I'm sorry, can you repeat the question?
Of course. Do you support the district's plans to survey students, staff, and parents about diversity, equity, and inclusion? How do you think the district should support LGBTQ students and staff members?
So the first part of that question is yes, I do support the diversity inclusion. As a member, I feel strongly that we celebrate the diverse backgrounds in our town and the cultures of our students, our staff, our township residents. I think we can do this by creating opportunities for residents from different backgrounds to connect, harbor open dialogue related to biases across gender, sexuality, age, and ethnicity. Me, myself, as a Girl Scout leader, continue to link my young, diverse troop with community-based committees and projects. I would encourage more education around people who break the norm, the norm, activists from minority communities, including the LGBTQ plus community. In April of 2021, Governor Murphy signed a bill mandating diversity inclusion courses in the K-12 curriculum, which we have adapted here in Bernards Township. Right now, in New Jersey, 45% of the 9 million residents in New Jersey are people of color or some other type of diverse background, and that's from the New Jersey Office of Diversity and Inclusion.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Next is Kirsten Light.
Can you repeat the question?
Of course. Do you support the district's plans to survey students, staff, and parents about diversity, equity, and inclusion? How do you think the district should support LGBTQ students and staff members?
Okay, let me answer the second part of that question first. I think that we should support all students regardless of what their race, religion, gendered identity background is. Everybody is created equal here, and everybody is deserving of the same support that everybody else gets throughout the community. So I'll leave that at that. As far as the survey, I do support the survey. One of the things that I was a little dismayed about was the way that that data is going to be used, because I would have hoped that as we were hiring a consultant for that and paying the consultant a lot of money to do that, that we would have an interpretation of the results, and we would have recommendations for improvement from that consultant that has the skill set to do that, and kind of a road to success and a roadmap to implement those suggestions, and also some key performance indicators that would indicate exactly if those programs were successful going down the line.
Thank you. Ruchika Hera?
Ms. Light just indicated that everyone here should be treated equal. But unfortunately, our own students in our district have acknowledged that the experience of living in this world is different for certain subsets of the population versus others, and they themselves have requested that our public school implement a curriculum that acknowledges fact. Those are not my words. Those are the words of the students in our district. So I have to disagree with that statement. With that being said, in March 2021, legislation was passed in our state that requires school districts to include instruction on diversity inclusion as part of the New Jersey Student Learning Standards. And as a BOE member, we are committed to celebrating the diversity of our students and staff and fostering an climate of mutual respect and promoting an inclusive environment where every person does feel a sense of belonging. And we need to continue to do that because the consensus is from our student body population that is not necessarily happening. With respect to LGBTQ, may I wait until my rebuttal to answer?
You can finish it for me through 30 seconds.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you. Next is, please turn off your mic. Next is Timothy Salmon. The question, you know, the survey, DEI.
Yada, yada, yada.
Well, you know, it's a lot of things. It's the survey, DEI, and support of LGBTQ students and staff.
Yeah, so I agree with Kirsten that all students in the township should be supported, all students and staff in the township should be supported in any way that leads to their feeling of safety, well-being, and fosters their success. That, I think, dovetails with the survey is, do all the students and staff in the township feel that way? So that's why the survey is a good idea, is to gauge how students and staff feel. Do certain subsets of students feel that they are not represented, or do they feel that there is, that they're not being included in district activities? So I think I do support the survey. As to the results, I think the reason that you don't want recommendations or a detailed plan, my personal opinion is that you want to let the, first and foremost, the students, staff, and community come together on something like that. So I think that while the recommendations, you know, might be useful from a consultant, I think that is really something that's specific to every district and community to figure out what works and will work the best for them.
Thank you. Robin McKeon?
I totally agree with what Tim just said in terms of every district being different. We know that we are doing a lot of things right in our district. You know, there's policies and there's federal and state laws protecting people's rights, and we have HIB laws to make sure that kids can report if they feel like they're being harassed, intimidated, and bullied, and we deal with it and stuff. So we don't have some of the maybe blatant, you know, problems that might occur some places, but we have heard students say that they, and staff, that they have not felt totally like they belong when they're in our district. And so I think, you know, I'm a real nerd when it comes to data. I like to look at data. I think we should collect from everyone, and not just like a survey, but the consultant will do focus groups where people can really talk about the issues and try to find out like what's going on. And like Mr. Salmon said, you know, our plan going forward will be totally dependent on what comes out of that. And I think it's very important work that needs to be done. It's not a simple fix where a consultant can give us a recommendation of how to fix the culture in our school, whatever might need fixed. I think these things are complicated, and that's why we need to start working on it.
Thank you. 30 seconds. Go ahead, Kirsten.
I'm very aligned with what Tim and Robin have said about this. However, if we are paying money to a consultant, that consultant obviously has some insight into best practices that have worked. So where I agree that it should be a solution that is tailored for our school community, and we should involve the key stakeholders in the crafting of that roadmap, but we still should not be paying money to collect data without any kind of recommendations at all.
Thank you. Ruchika, go ahead.
To finish my answer.
30 seconds.
To finish my answer, I just want to say I do. I agree with everyone. I do believe that we need a consultant. I do believe we should collect data. And then I do agree that to some extent, we use that data. And if that means getting a recommendation, so be it. If we believe that we can take the data and then utilize it in some format and come up and create our own, you know, logic as to how to implement, you know, diversity inclusion, inclusion of, you know, other students, including students in the LGBTQ plus, it needs to be done.
Thank you. I'm sorry. Robin, go right ahead. 30 seconds.
Okay, in terms of the consultant, I mean, I was at the committee where we met with her, and she does provide a summary of like strengths and weaknesses of the district and some like recommendations of areas that need addressed. She doesn't give you a concrete action plan of every single little thing that needs to get done. That's something that needs to be done by the stakeholders themselves, the students, the staff, and the community. So, you know, that's what we're signing up for, and I think we're clear about what she does and what she doesn't do when she comes.
Thank you. Anyone else? 30 seconds? All right, let's go on to the next question. As soon as I figure out which one it is. Do you think that critical race theory is being taught at Bernards? If so, give concrete evidence. Timothy Salmon, it's up to you first.
No, it's not. The administration has answered this question, saying that critical race theory is not being taught in Bernards Township schools. So I have no evidence to prove that's not.
Okay, Harpreet? I'm sorry, Gudia Singh?
No, it's not being taught in our township. I agree with Tim. I also do not have enough evidence to give you an example.
Thank you. Robin McKeon?
No, we're not teaching critical race theory. I do that down at Rutgers sometimes in my class because it's part of the curriculum there. We do teach students about inequality in society when we're studying history and when we're talking about issues. So, you know, critical race theory is an abstract theory that people talk about in graduate school. It's not something that you teach in a K-12 setting. So I think there's a lot of misunderstanding in our materials, on our website, and the flyers out there. There's a really helpful summary from New Jersey School Boards about all the confusion about critical race theory and how, you know, people keep using that terminology. There's even confusion out there between critical race theory and culturally relevant teaching, which is something that people do do, and that is something that we do in our schools, which is basically being aware of your students' cultures and how they experience their education. So.
Thank you. Ruchika? Hera?
I piggyback off of what everyone else has also said. CR2 is a tool that asks individuals, in my opinion, to examine and think critically about issues related to race, racism, and inequity. It raises awareness of how policy affects certain inequities that may exist in that society. And this is something that we ask our students to do every day. We ask them to think critically of the choices they make on an individual level and how their interactions may be perceived by their counterparts. We ask students every day what they think about historical precedent, current events, proposed policies, the environment, society, et cetera. And these are tools and questions that we have been using and asking for years. This is not something new, and this is not required to bring attention to it in a setting of a dedicated class. So often, the best lessons are the ones that are taught subtly, and this is why our district is not planning to implement a critical race theory curriculum at this time.
Thank you. Kirsten Light?
So one of the problems that I've been observing, especially through a lot of my research, is that the curriculum and the specific things that are being taught are not transparent to the parents. So I don't have a knowledge that critical race theory or tenants, or some tenants of critical race theory are not being taught in the school district. I do think from a social, emotional learning standpoint, I think that program on its face is actually, you know, very, very well-intentioned. But even as I've tried to get copies of class materials that are being taught to my six-year-old son in kindergarten, I have not been able to get those materials so that I could actually review them. So I have no knowledge of whether it is or is not because it's less than transparent.
Thank you. Robin, you have 30 seconds.
Okay. I kind of disagree with us not being transparent about our curriculum. If you go on our curriculum website for the district, you can click on all the different subject areas, and you can also search by topic. So you can search and find out what grade different topics are being taught. So it's actually a lot of material on there to look through. So I would encourage people, it's on our flyers outside, the link to the website, and it does talk about the different state mandates and what's being taught in our district.
Thank you. Yeah, Kirsten, you wanted a response to that?
So I think that it's probably not as transparent as you might think it is, because I actually was on that site just this morning, and the materials that I got were dated 2017, 2018, and with the New Jersey Learning Standards for 2020 that go into effect actually next school year. It was very, very confusing to see what is being taught, when and where, and no access to the actual materials, lesson plans, and things of that nature. And I think if we brought transparency, that we would be able to assuage some of the parents' concerns about this topic.
Thank you. Timothy?
I think, obviously, if you want to know what's being taught in your student's, your child's class, ask the teacher first. I think maybe you've done that. But if you're looking for something that we're not teaching, I don't know how you're going to find it on a website or get it from the teacher. The administration's already said that we are not teaching critical race theory in the district. So if you ask a teacher or an administrator, please show me the place that you're not teaching something. I think that's going to be a difficult request to respond to.
Ruchika?
But I think this is one of the reasons why I think, believe it would be helpful to have the consultant come in and conduct, you know, and find the data and the metrics to see what is happening. And if, again, if the curriculum needs to be changed in any way, there's a whole curriculum review process, which culminates with approval from the Board of Education.
Thank you. All right, anyone else? Next question. Given that there are dangerously high levels of attrition among all educational staff, what plans does each candidate have to encourage retention of teachers, aides, and educational support professionals? Robin, you're up first.
Okay, well, I think you've all been hearing about some of the staffing shortages across the country and stuff with bus drivers and workers in the cafeteria. There's definitely shortages of certain fields in education right now. I think more specifically in terms of having staff that want to work in our district. I think one of our goals in our strategic planning was about staff competencies, and that included their wellness and their social, emotional wellness, as well as how that impacts students' wellness. So I think, you know, we have obviously been derailed by COVID because everyone's wellness was very negatively affected during the last two years. But we started making some real progress to talk about different ways to try to support our staff and to focus on their wellness and how they feel. And so I would encourage that we, we're coming out of the years that we had where we really couldn't focus, we were just trying to get schools open. Now schools are open, and we're back to some of the stuff we were working on. We want to focus on our instructional coaching program for teachers and supports for teachers.
Thank you. Kirsten Light?
I think the key question here is why are they leaving? You know, I think we need to be asking not only ourselves, but, you know, really interviewing the teachers, the staff, as to, you know, what is the reason? Why are they unhappy with the school district? Is it for personal reasons? Is it due to vaccine mandates? Is it due to, you know, family obligations? Did another school district provide something that we couldn't? I don't think that until we understand the root cause of why they're leaving, we can really recommend an action moving forward.
Thank you. Gudia?
Statewide, nationwide, there's a staff shortage, as Robin mentioned, teachers, aides, food personnel. We're feeling it here a lot, bus drivers as well, as many of us know. From a parent perspective, we've all struggled a little bit this year getting things up and running, trying to be normal without actually being normal. I think that the social and emotional wellness of our teachers is imperative. It trickles down to our kids, which trickles down to home. And I think that we need to figure out how to support our teachers better. And if that means we survey our staff, we survey our staff. We ask them. We just point blank, you know, go straight to the source and figure out what the problem is, and then we come up with the strategic plan to assist and encourage and support.
Thank you. Timothy Salmon?
I would kind of push back on the premise of the question a little bit, that there's a dangerously high level of attrition here in Basking Ridge. I mean, that there might be some statewide part of this question, but I don't see a dangerously high level of attrition here. I think we saw an increased level of attrition, given the COVID pandemic, and teachers not either retiring or scaling back work because they had issues, personal issues. But I think the way to deal with teacher attrition is set up the environment for teachers to succeed, to feel safe, to feel comfortable, to feel like they're making a difference with students, and provide the support that they need through, like Robin said, professional coaching and staff, professional development opportunities to further their own education and career.
Thank you. Ruchika?
I'm going to be quick. I piggyback right off of Tim.
Any rebuttal to that? Okay, let's go to the next one. How will you ask the Curriculum Committee to monitor the new legislative mandate on teaching civics? What would you like to see in that curriculum? Harpreet Gudia Singh is first, and if you want me to, I can repeat it. Okay. How will you ask the Curriculum Committee to monitor the new legislative mandate on teaching civics? What would you like to see in that curriculum?
So to be completely honest, I haven't had this training yet since I'm very new to this role. But I believe I would like to see a little bit more of a connection with our social studies into modern-day civics.
Thank you. Next is Timothy Salmon.
The way that I would monitor the teaching civics is by asking our newly-appointed Director of Social Studies, Mr. John Terry, about what's going on with civics. He actually is very enthusiastic about student engagement in civics. So I think that's one of the great reasons that he's coming to this district. What would I like to see in the civics curriculum is more student engagement. The student district already runs a class or an event called Project Citizen, where students are engaged and pick out an issue and really engage in it and try to make a difference through either their own action, legislative lobbying, whatever it takes to make that action happen. And I think just more of that is a great thing at all levels. So even at the, you know, youngest kids to understand, like Kirsten said, I mean, observing the right to vote and how important that is for everybody, acknowledging those rights from K through 12, and understanding that the civics part of the social studies education is so important because each student needs to feel like they can affect a change.
Thank you. Kirsten Light.
I have common ground with Tim on this. I do think it's an important subject. I think, you know, as our nation seems to be very, very divided, we need to come back to what makes us great and what makes us, you know, enjoy our country so much. You know, I did mention that the right to vote is one of our most important responsibilities. So what I'd like to see in the curriculum is, you know, is a reversion back to kind of the civics classes that I received when I was a child focused on our shared history, you know, how people have affected history through, you know, various different types, whether it be good or whether it be bad. Not all of our history, you know, is something that we should be waving a flag about in some cases. So, you know, with that, I'd like to see that. But going back to, you know, how would we monitor it? Again, I go back to curriculum transparency. And we really need to make sure that all of the parents that want access to that curriculum and the examples have very, very easy, clear access to it.
Thank you. Rachika?
I would have to agree with everybody else. I also agree that we utilize our social studies, our teachers, our administration to really monitor what is being implemented. Me personally, with respect to civics, I mean, I would love to see more student dialogue. I would love to see the students get more involved. And I just want the class to be something that's maybe taught in a way that's a little bit outside the box and actually have, like, you know, again, more student involvement and input. That's what I would personally like to see.
Thank you. Robin McKeon?
In the many years I've been on the curriculum committee, in my time during the board, there's been a lot more civics added to the actual curriculum, to the standards, which makes me very happy. This latest mandate is specifically about middle school and more civics in middle school. And so the curriculum committee will get updates on how we may implement that in our curriculum. But civics, to me, is much more broad than that. And we have so much going on in our district. Of course, COVID, again, put a damper on a lot of what goes on with student involvement. There's so many clubs here at Ridge, like the club that's hosting tonight, and many other community service clubs at all levels. And student government, even the elementary schools is very, very active. There's a lot, each school has their own things. But a lot of stuff goes on in our schools, not just in our social studies class. So I see civics as a much broader thing than just what goes on in the social studies curriculum. It makes me very happy to see more and more students getting engaged with real-world problems and focusing on what they can do to make the world a better place. I think our young people now are much more engaged in that regard than they used to be.
All right. Thank you very much. Next question. As a board member, how will you assure full transparency of next year's new health and PE New Jersey Student Learning Standards? How will you assure that the curriculum is provided in a timely manner to parents? We're starting with Rachika. I can repeat it if you want me to.
I'm going to defer because I don't know if I could honestly answer that question.
Okay. If you want to come back in the 30 seconds after, you may.
Thank you.
Robin, you're next.
Before COVID, when we had some different Bernard's Connect meetings after the strategic plan, one of the threads of the strategic plan was more collaboration and communication. So we started some different meetings and threads. And there was some meetings at Ridge High School about the new curriculum for health and PE. I would hope that as any changes are made, that there'll be parent meetings to give them the opportunity to ask questions about that. So I would hope that that's how we could be transparent with the community as anything is implemented.
Okay, thank you. Next is Timothy.
I agree with what Robin said in terms of transparency for specific topics. Most of the curriculum is delineated by the New Jersey State Learning Standards for Health. So there is that component of it that we are teaching what the state is requiring us to teach. In terms of the specific class materials, that's something that would be shared with parents or discussed topically with parents, as we did during the last potential change to the health curriculum.
Okay, thank you. After Timothy, Kirsten?
If nobody has read the standards, I'd definitely advise going to do that. Or if anybody had seen the debate between our gubernatorial candidates as well, there was some discussion about that. You know, again, I go back to complete transparency in the curriculum, links available for the parents to review on lessons and what is being taught. I know I had an experience where I had asked for the lesson plans, which I mentioned earlier, on what was being taught to my son on social-emotional learning. And I was not able to get those. So, you know, again, as these things are rolled out, there's a lot of concerning things in the plan that I think revert back to things that maybe, you know, the parents would want to teach their children rather than having it be taught in a school setting. So I really do believe there needs to be parent involvement. There needs to be ultimate transparency on that. And at the end of the day, make sure that everybody agrees in what is comfortable for their children being taught.
Thank you. Gudia?
In regard to the transparency between parents and staff, I had an experience last year with my daughter in sixth, oh, sorry, fifth grade, two years ago now, before COVID. And I did have questions about the health class. I seem to get pretty good answers from my teachers. So I think a lot of it has to fall on the parent if you have very specific questions. I think the teachers do a pretty fair job of trying to connect with the parents through BT Connect and some of the newer programs that we're starting to roll in. But I do feel that as an active parent in my house, I try to stay on top of some of this stuff. And I understand not everybody is able to do the same amount at home. But I think that you have to prioritize. And I do reach out when I need to reach out.
Thank you. Rachika, do you want to say anything in 30 seconds or no?
No, actually, I kind of do agree with Gudia to some extent. I think if you're not getting the transparency that's needed. I mean, again, as someone who has now been on the board for several months, I can say that the board is doing everything that they can to be as transparent as they possibly can. But a lot of it, it does fall back to just, you know, maybe start with just reaching out to the teacher if you have any questions, seeing if those questions can be answered. And again, not just with respect to this subject area, but with respect to any subject area.
Thank you. Kirsten, you want to say something?
Just, you know, just one thing. I think that we need to find a better way for the community to be able to do that because I don't think that they want, you know, teachers want to be bogged away from their educational responsibilities of our children to answer parental questions. So again, I go back to if there's a nice, easy way that parents can actually look up the materials online, and if they have additional questions, then ask. It would minimize the disruption to the learning environment.
Thank you. All right, let's go on to the next question. Do you believe that students should be asked to publicly take a political position by participating in walkouts or protests during school hours? Kirsten, we're starting with you.
Honestly, I think that that is their right to do so. I know, you know, in my school, we did a walkout to protest the firing of teachers because we were very upset by that when I was back there. I think it's part of their civic duty, civic right, and their First Amendment rights. So I would support it.
Thank you. Timothy?
I don't think any student should be forced to take a position, a political position in any event. So I like, I disagree that a student should be forced to take any political positions that would necessitate any action like a walkout.
Robin?
Yeah, I mean, the way I heard the question was, should they be asked to do it? And I don't think they should be asked to do it. I think that they do have the right to protest under, you know, reasonable conditions. I think, you know, schools have to keep kids safe. And they can't just have, you know, an unsafe, you know, protest just, you know, come about. I think students in our district have, you know, had protests. I think, you know, our students are very respectful. And I think that they would probably talk with their student government reps and their administrators and stuff. And so I think we have had that happen here. And I think it went very smoothly. But I wouldn't say anyone should be forced to participate.
Thank you. Gudia?
Yeah, I agree with Tim and Robin as well. I think that that's walking on a somewhat dangerous line when you ask a child to take a party position. And a lot of our kids are younger, and some might not even understand what they're trying to decide yet. So I do think it's a little dangerous. There's definitely a proper way to manage opinions. And there's people to talk to. So I think that we can do it in a much more responsible fashion.
Rachika?
No, I agree. I don't think students should be forced or asked to take a political position if they don't want to with respect to protest. If it's going to disrupt the educational process in the school day, I don't think it needs to take place at the school. But with that being said, if it wants to be done off school grounds on a weekend and in a respectful way, sure.
Okay, Kirsten, you have, I've been asked by the audience for you guys to please speak closer to the microphone so they can be heard better. Thank you.
Let me just clarify. I don't think that any student should be forced to do anything that they don't want to do. But I do feel that they, if they feel strongly for something, regardless of political party or a position they want to take, they have the right to organize in a protest and respectfully organize, not violently protest.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right, next question. Do you believe that the ultimate source of values education for students should be their parents? Rachika, we're starting with you.
Could you please repeat the question?
Sure. Do you believe that the ultimate source of values education for students should be their parents?
No. I think we, as a community and as a school district, have a job to also instill certain values, beliefs in our students. I think that's critical.
Robin?
I agree. I mean, parents have obviously a huge impact on teaching their kids values. But kids also live in a community, a larger community, a school and a town. And I think it's part of learning to be a member of that community that you learn some of those values from your community, not just from your family.
Thank you. Kirsten? Kirsten, sorry.
I think yes. Basically, you know, children have a feeling of belonging based on a strong family unit. That's where they first learn belonging as a part of a family unit. So parents should have the primary responsibility for teaching the values of the children. And the school system should reinforce those values, but not dictate what they are.
Thank you. Gudia?
I believe values start at home at a very early age, as soon as you're born. And I think that as we go through school and we go through our youth, we adapt values at school because it's our community working together to harbor those healthy relationships and correct values. I think at some point, the parents become supportive of the school and the school becomes supportive of the parents. So there's some type of happy medium where both parties are equally responsible. And then, of course, that will shift, you know, as you get into a job and you get into a career, you graduate college, now you have your own set of values, but you're still going back to what you've learned at the base. So I think that, I think this is a question where you can say yes and no. I think parents start and then school takes over and then maybe it yoyos a little bit more down the road.
Thank you. Timothy?
I don't think parents should be the ultimate source of values for a child. I think that completely inhibits personal growth and change for an individual. I think, like Gudia said, parents provide the initial set of values that they can reinforce at home. But kids grow up and they change and they do, you know, they make their own decisions. So I don't think any adult would say, I believe the exact same thing as my parents throughout the course of my life and made zero changes. So I don't think parents are the, should be the ultimate source of values for kids.
Thank you. Go ahead, Rachika.
I think one of the reasons why our school district is recognized as having such a stellar reputation is because we do focus on promoting certain values and beliefs. And as Malcolm Forbes said, "The purpose of education is to replace an empty mind with an open one." So again, I agree. I mean, whatever the values are that are being taught at home, I think do need to certainly be reinforced at school. But children will learn other values at school as well.
Okay, thank you. Next question. Do you commit to using information from both sides of the political spectrum when making decisions that affect the students of our district? Diversity should be respected, including differences in political opinion. Do you agree? Gudia, we're starting with you. If you want me to, I'll repeat it. Okay. Do you commit to using information from both sides of the political spectrum when making decisions that affect the students of our district? Diversity should be respected, including differences in political opinion. Do you agree?
I absolutely agree that all sides of the party should be heard, included, and listened to. I do believe that being on the Board of Education has shown me over these last four months that you really don't need to put politics in to make decisions for the kid's education. I strongly believe in that. But at the same time, I think that you need to be able to listen to people because everyone has the right to say what they feel. That's the whole point of diversity and inclusion. Every child, every family member, every resident of this town should be heard, no matter where they're coming from or what party they're affiliated with.
Thank you. Kirsten?
Yes, I can commit to that. I think, you know, as this is a nonpartisan position, political views should not really have a place. We really need to sit there and engage the parents and engage the community to get their input and judge that input and see if we can meet in the middle and find some common ground if there are differences based on a political bias.
Thank you. Rachika?
I think that's one of the reasons why I feel that it's great to have a Board of Education that's comprised of a diversity of people with different backgrounds and different perspectives. But when it comes to actual politics, I don't think partisan labeling should play any role in our decision-making, in our decision-making. It never goes into my thought-making process. The board's role is to make decisions that are in the best interest of our students.
Thank you. Timothy?
This is, like Kirsten said, this is a nonpartisan position. Politics, political opinion has no impact whatsoever on any of the decisions that I've ever made or I've seen anyone on my tenure on the board make, or that I've ever heard in coming to board meetings before I was on the board. It has zero influence or impact. Diversity should be respected, including differences in political opinion. Among students, yes, of course. I mean, that kind of leads to the last question of changing values. I mean, you should be hearing different, both sides, different sides, regardless if it's diversity in political opinion, or background, or lifestyle. All opinions should be respected and, I think, exchanged in a fair way.
Thank you. Robin?
Yeah, I totally agree with that. I make my decisions...
I make my decisions based on what's best for the students, but I do it by looking at research and facts. And facts and research might include how people are feeling or people's opinions, you know, to a certain degree, but not politics. Politics is completely different than that. So this is not a political position. It's nonpartisan and politics shouldn't be involved in any decisions that we make.
Okay, thank you. Next question. What are your thoughts on our strategy for special education and its impact on our school budget? Timothy, we're starting with you. Special ed and its impact on our school budget.
Okay, so my thoughts on special education here are that we do provide an excellent program in terms of special education here. We continually, each year, have other districts that reach out to send special education students here for all the services we provide. I think that the PEC community, the Parents of Exceptional Children, are extremely engaged and provide an amazing feedback loop to our special education services here. I think that's critical to have the parents involved. In terms of the school budget, special education costs are increasing, especially for sending districts, sending students out of district. We have made a large, important move, I think, to keep as many kids in district as possible. And that actually has impacted our budget because it doesn't open up spots for students to come in from outside of our district. However, I think that's extremely important. I'm a big believer in early intervention and I think our special education department does a great job here. Thank you.
Thank you. Gudia?
Yes, I agree with that. I've been looking at some of our financials for that. We do spend a little bit more money here because of our special education programs. As Tim mentioned, many parents are attracted to Bernard's Township because of all that we can offer to our students. And so early intervention is key, basically the same thing Tim said. And I do, I think that's why, that's what it is.
Thank you. Robin?
Yeah, I agree. We are proud of our programs here and we do have, you know, higher costs because of our programs and because of the number of students in our programs. I think the big issue here is why the state and the federal government do not fund, you know, special education the way that they should. We don't get all the money that we're supposed to get for it and the way that the state does its formula is not based on how many actual students we have, you know, in the programs. It's based on this, like if we were an average district. So I think, you know, we keep trying to advocate for our district and districts like ours at the state level. I think that, you know, it's an unfunded mandate, but it's a mandate that should be happening. We want students to get the best education they can and we're proud of our programs. We don't want to take away anything from our students, but the government needs to step up.
Thank you. Rachika?
I agree with everything that was said. I think we have a great special education program. That's part of the reason a lot of families come to our district. And the reality is the cost, as I understand it, is rising. And I do agree with Robin, we need to continue to just reach out to the government to be more involved.
Thank you. Kirsten?
You know, the first thing that I can say about this topic is that it is the law that we need to provide these services to our children in need of this. And I have one of those children who does receive special services and I can't say how grateful I am for that. My opinion on how that affects the budget, it is more cost-effective to have the services in town rather than to pay tuition expenses to other towns, including the busing costs to send our children to those other towns. And in additional, you know, because we have such an amazingly strong program here within the district, we do get students' tuition payments from other districts. So I think it could be significantly negative on the budget if we did not invest on these special services, so I support keeping them.
Thank you. Next question. What are your concerns for the future of education in Bernard's Township? And how will you work to fix it? Robin, you're first.
That's a hard one. Concerns for the future of education. Well, as Mr. Byrd in his statement pointed out in the beginning, the world is changing so rapidly. I mean, I'm starting to feel like a dinosaur, but like, you know, my kids don't believe, like, I didn't have a cellphone when my oldest daughter was little and now look at what's going on. So things are changing so quickly. I think we have to, you know, public education is an institution, just like most big bureaucracies, that adapts somewhat slowly, right, over time. We have to make some more rapid change, you know, in education in general and how we do it. I think we've made immense changes, as Mr. Byrd pointed out, in the classroom. The way that these teachers that I see back there teach is completely different than how when I went to school. I went to Willie Mann and it was different then. So I think we have to definitely adapt to the times and really put in the investment in education that we need. And I really hope that our country and our state can step up and do that.
Thank you. Kirsten?
I think one of the overwhelming concerns that I hear from parents that I have are that we are teaching children what to think rather than how to think and how to have some discernment. So I'd like to see the curriculum be more thought-provoking in those areas related to that. I think that that's part of the curriculum committee. I think it's also part of the, you know, of the methods that we use to teach our children to be able to think critically. The other area that I see as being very, very important is around STEAM because most of the jobs that our children are going to have coming out of school have not even been invented yet. And that's because of the fast pace of change related to technology. So I think that we should be focusing, you know, a lot more on STEAM education in all areas so that our children are prepared for those jobs of the future.
Gudia?
Yes, as mentioned, the world is ever-changing. It's changing very rapidly. Things become hot one day and then the next day it's obsolete. I'm having trouble keeping up with my 12-year-old. I think something that comes along with that is the implementation of social media and the peer pressure and stress that kids feel these days with just keeping up the facade or trying to be smarter than the next child. And I think they feel a lot of that and maybe they don't communicate it properly amongst their friends, their peers, their staff, their parents. So I want to see more open dialogue in our curriculum around social and emotional learning. I want kids to feel a comfort. I want them to responsibly use social media and that needs to be taught. We need to adapt to a newer curriculum based on what's trending now and what's going to continue to trend because it's only going to become bigger.
Thank you. Timothy?
Gudia stole my answer. That wasn't planned, by the way. No, I think I echo what Robin and Gudia said about, and Kirsten, about the pace of change. And I think we learned that lesson as a Board, in particular during the pandemic when the district completely switched to a fully virtual system for learning. And we just had to make decisions quicker than our typical kind of like pace of, you know, committee meeting, board meeting, make a change. And I think we learned that lesson and I think we've adapted readily. I think, concerns, maybe isn't the right word, but the topic that I think will be at the front of everybody's mind going forward is mental health and social emotional learning. I think from most of the people in this audience, we probably had no exposure to that or minimal exposure to that when we were going to school. And I think that that, mental health is going to be such a large component of how we move forward to keep kids engaged and having fun and growing confident at school. No, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Rachika?
One of the concerns, I mean, I agree with Tim as well. I think social, emotional well-being and mental health is probably right on the top. Sadly, I do think that there is a rise in student anxiety, stress, more bullying, which is possibly prompted by use of certain technology these days, especially I see it at the middle school level. I also think that there's a lot of academic pressure that these students are facing and there are cost-effective methods to help students in dealing with these stressors. And we need to just continue to create a positive climate in our schools, which I think we're doing and we're trying. We just need to continue to do it. And it's not just amongst our students, but amongst our teachers as well.
Okay, thank you. Yes, Robin, 30 seconds.
I just wanted to kind of not rebut, but to point out that I think the kids are taught critical thinking skills, not, they're not being taught what to think. I am amazed at what the students are able to do at a very young age when, and I've been teaching college students who haven't had to engage in a debate before or haven't had to, you know, like weigh the pros and cons of an issue or work in a group to do a creative project, you know, and our students are doing that stuff on a daily basis. So I don't think that they're being taught what to think. I really do think that the focus is on critical thinking skills.
Yes, Kirsten, go ahead. 30 seconds.
Again, you know, from talking to parents in the community, I think, you know, the fact that we were virtual during COVID opened a lot of people's eyes as to what was being taught. And I know that I observed some teachings that I wasn't comfortable with. So, you know, whereas it might not be a widespread problem, maybe it's limited, I think we need to make sure that we are teaching children how to think and not what. And I've seen an example of other things in the district.
Thank you. Timothy?
I think we are really making a concerted effort to teach the kids how to think. I know, at least in Ridge High School, we are constantly asking the kids, what do you think about this issue? If you want to have spirit and get kids to come to spirit events, how do we do that? What should we do? So by pushing it back on the kids, you are engaging them and asking them, how can we do this? How can we help you? How can we support you? And that makes them think of the solutions, which is the best possible case.
Thank you. Anyone else? Yes.
I have to piggyback off of that too because the reality of it, I have a first grader and a seventh grader. And even my first grader came home the other day and during NEST, they were talking about respect, but then they were being questioned, you know, like, what do you think about this? What does this mean? The definition of critical thinking is pretty broad. In my opinion, that's, I thought that he was being asked to think, you know, to question. So I do believe that our district is doing it. I see it firsthand at the elementary school level. I see it at the seventh grade level as well.
Thank you. All right, let's go. And I'd like to tell the audience that this will be the last question for the evening due to time. If you've submitted questions and they weren't asked, it's just purely because of time. Last question, ladies and gentlemen. To further curricular standards and transparency, would you support a monthly report from each supervisor about the curriculum distributed to parents? Rachika, you got the first one there. Do you want me to repeat that?
Yes, please.
Sure. To further curricular standards and transparency, would you support a monthly report from each supervisor about their curriculum distributed to parents?
If that helps and the teachers have the time and energy and want to take that away from, you know, again, educating our students, sure, sure.
Okay, thank you. Robin?
We've tried different things over the years in terms of communicating curriculum, curriculum decisions, curriculum highlights. We've had curriculum newsletters. We used to have a committee where there was a parent rep from each school that would go and listen to all the new things each month, you know what I mean, that happens in the curriculum department and go back and report to the school. And that kind of fizzled out a little bit. I think the intent was for them to then go back to the PTO and write up a summary of what happened at that meeting. We've tried different things. I think when we had the strategic plan, this is something that came out about people wanting to have more information and we had ideas of having, you know, threads of the BT Connect that would figure out like what's the best way to communicate things. I mean, there's so much going on in our curriculum. There's no way we can like, you know, send a monthly update with every single thing from every single class, from every single teacher. But I do agree that we should find creative ways to get more information to parents because I think they're very interested in that topic.
Thank you. Timothy?
I think there's so many ways to engage with your student's teacher. You can go onto like individual teachers' Google classrooms and see their daily assignments. So I don't know if a monthly report is, who is that benefiting, right? Like, if I have a second grader and I see a monthly report about what they're teaching at Ridge High School, I don't know that that is materially changing what is happening with my second grader. So in terms of transparency with the curriculum, I support that entirely. I think if a parent has an issue with something they don't want being taught, I would say, go to your teacher and say, are you going to teach this topic because I want to discuss that with you first, rather than saying, I want to see every lesson plan that you have and then I'm going to hunt through and try to figure out what I don't like. It's probably an easier process if a parent has an issue to go to the teacher and say, I don't, I know you're going to teach this, I want to know if you are going to teach this specific topic and how are you going to relay this to the students? But I think there's so many other ways to engage with the student's teachers and see what they are learning on a daily basis that I don't see the need for a monthly report right now.
Thank you. Kirsten?
I'm not sure who asked that question, but I think my follow-up question would be, you know, what would be meaningful in that report? I think through community involvement, we should define, you know, what does it mean to have transparency to the parent? What do they want? And I think that, you know, a survey may be very, very valuable to find out, to come up with those, you know, methodologies on which it would be most transparent. So I would support anything that makes, you know, the parents more knowledgeable about what their students are learning on a daily basis. I think some of the quickest ways to do that is through, you know, the curriculum website that is up there and maybe making more access for lesson plans and examples of, you know, at least lessons that are being taught on hot topic issues that, you know, maybe the parents don't necessarily all see eye to eye on.
Thank you. Gudia?
I'm fully supportive of transparency at home from school. But at the same time, I do think that it would be counterintuitive to do a monthly report at all age levels. I think with the high schoolers, it's a little bit easier to figure out what they're working on based on some of the curriculum websites as well as some of the individual teacher websites. Where I have found it to be a little bit more challenging is with my first grader because he doesn't always know how to communicate what they're doing. So I think if we were to implement some type of report, I would maybe see the benefit at a younger age than an older age. And I have a seventh grader and a first grader and I have a child who hasn't even entered the school system. So I do see the benefit of that. I'm just not sure. I want to take their, the teacher's time away on a monthly basis to spend on a report.
Thank you. All right. I'd like to thank you for your questions. We will now have the candidates' closing statements, beginning with Rachika Hira.
I've got the best spot on this table.
Sorry.
No, it's okay. First and foremost, I want to thank the League of Women Voters, the Ridge Students and everyone else here who has made this happen. I thank everybody in the audience for being here. I think we can have a vigorous debate and continue to have it in our community about things like mass fiscal responsibility, managing property taxes, building facilities and everything that has transpired in the past. However, in my opinion, it makes sense to focus our time and energy on the education and emotional well-being of all of our students and how we can better serve them so that their actual educational experience aligns with the reputation that our school district has worked very hard to establish. I strongly believe that the Board needs to continue to be comprised of individuals who are logical, reasonable, respectful citizens, who are open-minded to varying, various, varying perspectives. As the role of a BOE member is to function as part of a policymaking board that impacts all students. I feel privileged that I've had an opportunity to serve on our Board for the last several months and it would be my honor and pleasure to not only complete my two-year term, but to continue to serve our students and community in the future if elected. I do wish to emphasize that I am running for a two-year seat against my challenger, Dr. Nastro, who is not here today. Dr. Nastro, I genuinely hope everything is all right and I hope you recover quickly. But I do want to point out to the community, this role is a volunteer position which requires a significant time, commitment, accountability, collaboration with other members of the Board. And the reality is, he's not here today, but I am here and I am listening.
Thank you. I'm sorry. Time is up.
Thank you.
That's all right. And next, we might as well continue in the order, Harpreet Gudia Singh.
I want to thank the League of Women Voters, the Ridge High Rep Team for this opportunity to speak among my fellow candidates here. I want to thank the Board of Education and I want to thank all of the audience members out here and everyone who's sent in questions online. It's been an absolute honor to be able to work with the dedicated team that makes our school district run so successfully as it does. From the students and the parents to the staff and the administration, to the amazing Board members I get to sit amongst every other Monday, I have joined the Board to make positive changes for our community, to listen to differing opinions and help make the right choices for our to listen to differing opinions and help make the right choices for our students. I want to continue doing that. I'm dedicated to learn as much as I can and gain a ton of experience here. I'm in it for the long haul. I'm right now looking for a three-year term, but I would love to be here for longer than that. So thank you again.
Thank you. Kirsten Light?
So just a little bit more about myself so that you guys can make an informed decision. I am a certified public accountant, and I work at Ernst &amp; Young as a senior manager in the Tax Technology and Transformation practice. My daily work life involves using design thinking and lean Six Sigma practices to create process improvements, cost efficiencies, and technology solutions for large multinational organizations. My approach and focus is data-driven and asking the question "why" like a precocious toddler to get down to the root cause of any given issue so that appropriate solutions can be recommended to any given challenge. Data is a very powerful tool that allows insight into these areas that require further investigation. And through my preparation for this election, I feel that there are a lot of areas that are ripe for that investigation, and that focus should be centered around people, process, and technology mantras. As a member of the Board, I will bring these skills to everything the Board undertakes and make measured decisions for the community based on the available data and the needs and values of the community. The role serves the entire community and regardless of political leanings, should strive towards middle-of-the-road solutions that are amenable to the whole of the stakeholders. This means not everybody will be happy all the time, and there will have to be give and take. But it will also mean that everyone's voice will be heard, and we won't become a headline on the news like many other districts have become. I thank everybody who has been here and engaged for the opportunity, and I really look forward to engaging with you more after this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. Timothy Salmon?
Thank you to the League of Women Voters, the students and administration for hosting this great night, and the parents for, and students for asking questions and observing online. We are so lucky to live in Baskin-Ridge and raise our families here. There's no doubt in my mind that everybody here moved here because of the school district. That's why I moved here with my family and raised my family here. The amazing staff and administration we have enabled the student success that we see that continually amazes me on a daily basis with my work with the Board for the past four years. I want to continue my service to the district, and I can't wait to see all of you at the next Board meeting, given all this lovely engagement. So please vote on November 2nd. Thank you.
Thank you. Robin McKinn?
But before I say what I was going to say, I just wanted to say that the four of us that are running together are having meet and greets, which are on the pamphlets outside, and we have information on our website. We really want to engage in dialogue with people, so we're hoping people come out and talk to us in a more informal manner. I'm not going to even use what I wrote. I tried to write a closing statement, but I figured it probably wouldn't do any good because I had no idea what I was going to be talking about and what questions are going to be asked. I've been on the Board for over 12 years, and I've loved it. I love education. That's why I went back to school for a PhD in education policy. I guess I'm just a real nerd that way. And I've had challenging times on the Board of Education and lots of rewarding times. I'm amazed by our students and our staff all the time. We've had a really rough two years. I've seen people pull together and support each other in ways that I would never have imagined. I'm excited about the future. I think our kids are really resilient, and yes, we do worry about their mental health. And yes, there are a lot of people struggling, but they've shown, the students have shown what they're capable of. And I would be very excited to stay on the Board and help keep working with our school district and all the amazing people here to move us into the future. Thank you.
Thank you so much. On behalf of myself, OVNI, Ridge Exploration for Political Participation, and the League of Women's Voters, we want to thank you all for coming out and participating in this crucial part of our upcoming election. And I also want to thank our moderator for doing such a wonderful job presiding over today's debate, and our volunteers for keeping everything organized, equitable, and per COVID-19 safety guidelines. And we also want to remind voters that there are three ways that they can vote in the upcoming general election. The first is vote-by-mail ballot. So registered voters can apply for a vote-by-mail ballot by following the instructions found at vote新Jersey.gov or contacting their county clerk. Remember, vote-by-mail ballots cannot be returned to any early voting location or any polling place for this election and must be mailed. The second way is in-person early voting. This new option enables all registered voters to cast their ballots in person using a voting machine during a nine-day period prior to Election Day. You can now choose to vote in person when it's most convenient to your schedule. In-person early voting locations will be open Saturday, October 23 through Sunday, October 31. Hours will be Monday through Saturday, 10:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m., and Sunday, 10:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. There's no appointment necessary. And the third way is at your polling place on Election Day. Vote in person at your polling place from 6:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. on Election Day on November 2. You can visit vote411.org for all this information, for voter registration information, early voting locations, polling place locations, and more. If you have any questions, Rep can also provide you with answers on our website or via email, ridgerep@gmail.com. Thank you all again, and have a great rest of your night.
Thank you.
Thank you.